Thank you. I'm just learning how to do this. You'll have to bear with me.
We would have never guessed that.
I think we're started.
We are.
Are you ready?
Yes.
Okay, then I'm going to bring to order the August 25th, 2020 meeting of the Larkspur Planning Commission. Do we have a roll call, please?
Okay, I will go from my top to bottom and start with Commissioner Swisher.
Present.
Chair Talber.
Present.
Commissioner Wagstaff.
Here.
And Commissioner Chalmers.
Present.
And I'm going to be working on getting Daniel Cuntler into the meeting. Aaron, if I send my email, he would not be able to use that.
Well, since we've started the meeting now, he can actually use the link on the agenda and join as an attendee. And then Kristin, as the host, should be able to upgrade him from attendee to panelist.
I don't have any other attendees showing up yet, just the nurse and Neil. Thank you.
I see a couple of attendees.
I see two.
Where? Where are we looking?
If you look under Participants, click on Participants, and then you'll see Panelists and Attendees, like two tabs.
I'm in Participants. I have the window open.
And at the top, you'll see it says Panelists.
Oh, got it.
And to the right, it says Attendees.
So I have Greg Fullford and Matt showing up.
Right. Okay. So I'm going to ask if there's any public comment on matters that are not on the agenda. And that would be the opportunity for either Greg or Matt to come forward if you would like to talk about anything other than 75 via Hermosa.
Aaron, are we?
I think not. So we're going to move on to the Planning Director's Report.
Okay, thank you Chairman Talber, members of the Commission. Just wanted to touch base this evening. We don't have a large agenda, but did want to catch up on a few things. If Commissioner Cuntler is able to join us tonight, I think he's trying to get on. He may report on this later in the evening, but we have had two meetings of recent with the General Plan Steering Committee with focus on the circulation element.
If I may interrupt for a second, Daniel Cuntler is an attendee. He is in as an attendee now. Sorry, go ahead, Neil.
Okay, are we able to?
It looks like Kristin just upgraded him to panelist, so.
Okay, here he comes.
Right.
Okay, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes. Yes, we can.
Sorry about that. I mean, I've searched far and wide for.
So we'll note for the record that Commissioner Cuntler is present as well, or present. So as I was saying, Daniel, I was mentioning to the committee, Commission, that we did have recently, we've had two meetings, two Mondays in a row with the General Plan Steering Committee with focus on the circulation element. It's been almost two years, actually, since we had last had committee meetings due to a number of factors that were underway. The circulation element is really very interesting. There's a lot going on that requires a number of updates and things to be addressed, particularly regarding vehicle miles traveled as a measure and as a goal, reduction in vehicle miles traveled as a goal within the city. Also, a lot of recognition of alternative transportation modes, enhancement of bicycle and pedestrian facilities as an important factor, developing complete streets, streets that serve all users. Our existing general plan and the CAC draft was our existing general plan is very vehicle oriented in terms of the circulation element. And the CAC draft did take a lot of measures to become more of a broader element. But I think we're doing even more at recognizing that the use of bicycles is really proliferating at this point, in particular, e-bikes as well and other forms of small electrical transportation devices. So along, as well as the technology that's in transportation in terms of ride share, Uber Lyft, and the potential for driverless cars in the future. And a lot that's happening with the transportation networks, particularly the Smart Train and the ferry landing that are located, have terminals in Larkspur Landing. So anyway, it's been a good, I think, healthy discussion. We're getting close to wrapping that up. And we'll be doing some final edits with that on the land use element. And really just kind of in the home stretch of the general plan update and getting ready to prepare a draft general plan for release to the public for environmental review and public consumption as a whole draft. Hope to have that done by end of September, early October. Or at least in a strong enough state that we can release the draft and begin that process. Other things that are going on, of course, COVID continues to be a challenge. We have, as we've talked about, some reduced staff due to retirement and furloughs, as well as reduced staff throughout the city. So the city is challenged at many ends in terms of services. And and we continue to have a pretty robust permit activity. Resales are going probably more than we had had in, on average, over the years. So resales are busy. As well as, we're also experiencing a number of complaints regarding permits, work without permits. We issued a stop work yesterday. We've got another complaint today. These seem to be coming in fairly regularly. I think we have the sense that there may be because of the reduction in staff or more, quote, chaotic environment, people may be taking liberties. We have been processing permits. It's been a bit delayed, but not to the degree that I think it justifies working without permits. So, but we do find ourselves pretty busy in that. Aaron Matthews, our assistant planner, who's here tonight and has been helping a lot with our ability to manage these meetings remotely, has also been very helpful in a lot of tasks to support the permit process. He's been working diligently in all things building, building department and planning department as well. So he's been very helpful. And as you could tell tonight, we've got, Kristin is endeavoring to really master the managing these meetings. And I'll be doing some of that training myself. I think we all have, we all have a learning curve here. So be patient with her. And that's about it to report. I'm going to leave the meeting in their hands. I think you're in good hands. It's, we have one topic tonight. So with that, I'd just ask if you had any questions for the Director.
No, just want to, I don't know if you mentioned this, that the retaining wall alongside City Hall is now being repaired. It's going to look, it looks great. It looks like they put it, they're putting in a nice solid structure there. That was kind of scary.
It's night and day compared to what was there. I think if you walked by to get your package, you should walk down towards Montevista on that side and take a look at the wall. If you had seen it before, I think ever since I've been working here, at least, or at least the last 10 years, it's been sort of, was kind of scary. It was kind of bulging out and looking like it was about to collapse for about 10 years now. But they finally gave me a chance.
Usually I walk in.
It was.
One other thing I do want to give you a heads up on, because I'm going to start preparing for a workshop, a public workshop with the Planning Commission on the topic of objective design standards. I've sent out some information on that for you in the past. It's a project that's been, the county has been kind of the lead on developing a a toolbox, sort of a workbook for objective design, objective design program for situations if and when the city is required to approve housing projects or potentially mixed-use projects under certain state laws that require an objective process, not a discretionary process. So you essentially have to provide standards for bulk and setbacks, details for windows and design. And while that sounds daunting, there actually are some opportunities to maybe create standards that could encourage designs that may be more appealing to the community than some of the things we have to fight over through the design review process. We're beginning to, I think, see that the, ultimately, this could lead to a process where, not just by mandate, but through program, the city may really program development and provide kind of a roadmap for developers in locations that we'd like to see housing of mixed use. Provide a roadmap for design on those properties. So that's going to be coming up soon. I haven't set the date yet, but we're getting close to a point that I think we'll have some materials to work with. And we'll want to make it a public workshop and begin to get some feedback on some of these ideas. Any questions? Okay.
Thank you, Neil. Are you ready for this now?
Okay, well, I'm going to leave you now. I'm going to go ahead and well, take off from the meeting. Good luck. And Kristin will let me know if you have any issues that I need to get back on with. Okay?
Thanks, Neil.
Okay, we're going to, we're going to go to our public hearing item now, which is design review, floor area ratio exception and heritage tree removal. 20-18 for 75 via Hermosa. And Kristin, oh, Eric, Eric.
Yeah.
Sorry. Can we have the staff report?
Yes, thank you Chair Talber and Planning Commissioners. So the applicant are requesting the following permits to construct three separate additions totaling approximately 769 square feet to an existing two-story, 2,300 square foot home on a 9,017 square foot parcel. The permits they're looking, are requesting are design review, floor area ratio exception to allow a FAR of .34, where a maximum of .26 FAR is allowed per the Larkspur Municipal Code due to the slope of the lot, and heritage tree removal to remove a Lombardi poplar from, with a circumference of 56 inches. The subject site is moderately sloping at 9,017 square foot parcel with an average grade of 24% located in the Greenbray neighborhood. Due to the topography of the Greenbray Hills, the original subdivision approval also permitted variances to the standard 20-foot front yard setback. This lot is required to meet a 15-foot front yard setback. The site is improved with an existing 1960s-era 2,300-square-foot split-level two-story, single-family residence with a two-car garage. An additional two guest parking spaces are provided on the existing driveway. The existing residential structure complies with lot coverage, natural state setbacks and height limits. The applicant is proposing to construct three separate additions to the residence, a master bedroom addition off the northwesterly rear corner of the main floor of the residence, a small family room addition off the easterly side of the main floor, and a new bedroom on the ground level behind the garage. It should be noted that a portion of the proposed bedroom addition is more than 50% below grade and excluded from the FAR calculation. The three additions would add approximately 769 net square feet. Additional improvements include reconfiguration of the interior floor plan, new windows, entry door, garage door, a new front porch treatment and color scheme. No change to the provision of existing onsite parking as proposed. In addition, the project proposes a considerable landscape plan, including filling in an existing pool, installing artificial turf in its place, replacement of a three-foot retaining wall that runs along the rear and easterly side of the lot, and removal of a heritage-sized Lombardi poplar tree. The Arbus Report recommends removal of the heritage-sized tree, since the roots of the tree will continue to grow and cause foundation damage. Based on the preliminary grading and drainage plans, the proposed grading for the ground-level bedroom will result in a total of 75 cubic yards of cut. Additional fill used solely for the removal and filling of the pool is exempt from the grading calculation. Therefore, the project did not require a slope use permit. As proposed, the new additions and exterior remodeling of the residence would update the ranch-style exterior to a more contemporary, modern architectural appearance. New additions would be finished with matching white exterior stucco walls and roof lines that mimic the gabled and hipped roof lines of the existing home. All siding will be repainted pure white, except for the exterior entry porch, which will include vertical stained cedar planks. Existing brick walls on the ground floor would be painted gray. New windows and doors would be Marvin metal clad in gunmetal dark gray. The front entry porch would be refinished with a vertical stained cedar entry wall. You could see that on the attached material sample board. The proposed new residence would increase the existing floor area from 2,300 square feet and a .26 FAR to 3,069 square feet and a .34 FAR. However, due to the 24% average grade of the lot, code permits floor area totaling 2,344 square feet and a .26 FAR. Therefore, the applicant has requested a floor area ratio exception permit. Generally, staff finds the proposed residence and finished materials to be attractive and consistent with the criteria for approval of application. The proposed design would add to the existing building footprint and maintain the same existing height. The proposed rear bedroom addition would be shielded from view of the body of the building, will not add to the visible scale of the residence when viewed from the street frontage. Similarly, the proposed 12-foot addition at the easterly side of the home is setback 60 feet from the sidewalk right away. Therefore, the residence will continue to remain compatible with the prevailing neighborhood, character and scale and pattern of development of the neighborhood. Homes along via Hermosa and Cortez-Luca near the residence are generally oriented in a side-by-side configuration with primary views out toward their front and rear yards. Further, the grade increases from west to east as you travel up the roadway and the home stair step up the hill, one above the other. New windows on the rear addition look in an easterly and northerly direction into the yard of the subject site. The proposed westerly wall of the addition would be stepped back five feet from the existing rear corner of the structure, providing a greater distance between the addition and the east side property line. The proposed northerly wall of the rear addition is roughly 30 feet to the rear property line. The easterly side addition has windows facing east. However, these windows should not impact the neighbor at 85 via Hermosa, since the home is uphill from the subject property. It should also be noted that the neighbors to the rear, 65 Cortez-Luca and east 85 via Hermosa are situated uphill and should not be impacted with regard to privacy views, air or light. Based on these factors, the proposed new residence should, would not significant or unreasonable loss or interference with privacy, light, solar access, and prominent scenic views from adjacent properties. Additionally, the proposed stucco siding, new roof elements and color palette of white and muted gray tones will combine in an attractive and visually cohesive manner and complement the site, the adjacent residences and surrounding neighborhoods. Staff has prepared a survey of neighborhood floor area ratios for the subject site and surrounding development. Based on the survey, FARs range from .16 to .69 with an average of .33. This proposal requests a .34 FAR, which is slightly above the average, but well within the range for the neighborhood. A review of the floor areas of surrounding homes indicates that the floor area of 21 other properties in the survey area meet or exceed this proposal. As the home retains the existing profile from the front elevation and the building footprint would remain relatively modest at 34% of the lot area, approval of this residence would not result in a home that overbuilds the lot. The central placement of the home on the parcel, new exterior finishes and staggered gable and hip roof elements provide visual interest and break up the massing of the simple, modern facade. The applicant is also proposing to remove a heritage-sized Lombardi poplar, as mentioned previously, from the northwest corner of the lot. The tree has a circumference of 56 inches, measured 24 inches above the base. Lombardi poplar is a non-native species to this region and has been planted such that it will negatively impact the home. Based on the location of this tree in the narrow side yard of the property and the existing site improvements that will manage site drainage and runoff, the removal of the tree will not adversely affect the topography of the land or cause significant erosion or increased flow of surface water. Further, this neighborhood is populated with a variety of native and non-native trees and shrubs and maintains a relatively heavy tree canopy. Therefore, the removal of this non-native tree will not adversely affect the general health, safety and welfare or be detrimental to persons or property in the vicinity. For these reasons, staff recommends that the Planning Commission approve the project as proposed.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for Aaron?
Yeah, I'd like to ask Aaron a small clarification. Thanks a lot for your report, by the way. It's quite, quite clear. When you say that the westerly wall of the addition, I'm assuming you're referring to the master bedroom addition?
The west.
So the westerly wall, the proposed westerly wall of the addition would be stepped back five feet.
Right, yes, the master bedroom addition, yes, in the rear.
So, so what, in that sentence, what you mean, do you mean that the placement of this addition is actually so far to the west of the property that that sort of enhances the distance to the easterly wall? Because I have a hard time, a little bit of a hard time understanding what that meant.
Yeah, sorry about that. So as seen on the Plan Sheet A 1.1 shared on the screen, you could see that the, it's the rear addition, which is the right side of the screen, it's a darker gray, is sort of stepped back from the existing wall of the home. So it's stepped further away from that neighbor, which is to the west.
To the west, not the east?
Right, to the west.
Okay, okay.
Sorry if I said east.
Okay, sorry. I just want to make sure I didn't misread. Thank you.
Right, no problem. Thanks.
Anyone else have any questions? Okay, I am going to ask the applicant if they would like to present their project. I'm not sure which one. So that looks like it's Kenneth Holder.
Kenneth Holder.
And you can turn on your video now in sound.
Okay. All right. Let's see.
We see you.
Oh, you do. Okay. Thank you. Good evening. Hi, it's Kenneth Holder. Thank you for this chance to present a little bit of background on the project. And as you can tell, it's a fairly modest addition to an existing property. And we felt like that the homeowners were agreeing to really be careful about impacting the existing fabric of the neighborhood for their needs. They, of course, this outdated house didn't have a true master suite, which was really the focus facing the yard. The willingness to stay single-story, at least in relation to the backyard, I think, is a tremendous benefit. That later in the project, we decided that they needed a little bit more living space off of the public area. And that led to the small addition of a den on the easterly property line. So these are both really small structures, barely visible from off-site. But it really, it matched their needs for a small family with three children. The plan was to remove the existing pool and return as much of the site to more of a naturalistic landscape. Due to MMWD restrictions, the decision was eventually made to change, rather than natural sod, the decision was made to change that to artificial turf or water-saving measures. And it's a permeable construction. It would allow water to flow through. So in fact, they are greatly, by removing so much concrete, they're greatly increasing the permeability of the site. So a lot of the, so one part that may not have been mentioned that's important at least to address is that they, rather than going second story, the homeowners agreed to go, to extend a lower level into a crawl space. It's, I would say, actually maybe even increased expense, but actually are putting in a lower level addition. So you can see on the left, I'm sorry, that's, okay. On the left-hand side, it shows a new bedroom that's actually formed by taking out some of the crawl space and adding a very small secondary entry to address the egress needs. It could, it's intended to serve perhaps as an au pair unit or who knows, even an attached dwelling unit, but it's really just an additional bedroom. We did check with Department, with Public Works. I'm sorry, I'm stuck here by the road here. The exterior entry was completely coordinated with Department of Public Works and has been coordinated to be within the allowance for, there's a side yard easement, a utility easement. And so it was allowed to encroach into the side yard setback, but not, clearly not within the easement itself. So, but it did allow for a little bit of lower level extension of living space, including a laundry room, that with a little bit more development, it sort of updated this house. So going back upstairs, you can see the master suite, very straightforward. We tried to make the focus of the house, the connection to the yard itself. That's really the, probably the great draw of this location is that really special backyard, the flat play space and the naturalistic slope beyond. So we've placed some attention, can you go to the, go back to the site plan, A 1.1? Yeah, we've placed a good bit of focus on landscape. The property is quite, well, I guess it was dated for the time, but it's a little bit neglected. So the plan is to introduce a series of, well, a really appropriate landscape design to update the site. It's all been fully coordinated with the fire department, with their planting list. Do you mind going to the vegetation management plan? It just shows the level of care that we've given. In terms of reducing fire risk, reducing known biomass, fire-prone biomass. And so we've got this completely coordinated with the fire department itself. The plant list, the planting selection has all been at least tentatively approved. And the plan is, as much as the budget will afford to, of course, to institute the full planting plan. It would be worse to go back to the, maybe to the cover sheet, the rendering at the front shows just the overall palette. And we find it to be an agreeable update. Just giving a little bit more differentiate, differentiation of the front elevation adds some visual interest. We are replacing windows and doors throughout. And the plan, of course, is to capture the view, but there's really no change to privacy on the side yard neighbors. The windows were carefully placed just enough to allow sort of an appropriate amount of daylight and ventilation to the rooms. These drawings have These drawings have been coordinated with the downhill neighbors. We figured those would be the ones who could maybe feel some impact. The support, the feedback we received was positive, supportive. And if I'm remembering correctly, I think there was some level of appreciation that overall, we're not really changing the attitude of the house to the site. So, at this point, it might be worth deferring. If we have any time left, I'd love for the homeowner, Greg Fulford, to speak, if he is present, if there's anything else that Greg wanted to add.
Okay.
Greg, would you like to speak?
Yes, he's ready. And so I'll take, I'm going to add him in as a panelist, and then I'll take Kenneth out.
Okay, thank you.
I guess before you take Kenneth out, does anyone have any questions?
Oh, right.
Does anybody?
Yeah, I do, they're very brief. And you may have already preemptively answered this. It concerns the downstairs, the downstairs addition, the additional bedroom slash media room. The wall, which is outside of the house, it's not a full-height wall. Is that correct? Because that's, is what shows up in pretty much what we see is what we're going to get.
Yeah, the rendering shows it somewhat accurately, and then we could switch to Sheet A 3.1. Attempts to show that it varies from about four feet down to maybe 12 inches.
Oh, okay, all right.
Yeah, so it's a very small wall, but it was just enough to retain to allow that code necessary egress. Is that, let's see, I'm sorry, the next sheet, actually, or maybe.
Right, so, yeah, yeah. Is there, is there any other natural light going into that, going into that space?
There actually, it's a good question, there actually is not. We chose to make all of it dependent on the door, and there's, I believe, there's a side light. We tried to get as much as we could, and yet minimize the height of that landscape wall.
Okay, so the reason I ask is that it would appear that, from a, and let me preface this, I'm only asking this from an architectural and structural standpoint. I'm not asking what the owners intend to do with their home. That's not my business, that's not my business. But it would appear that that area would, you know, could qualify as a junior accessory dwelling unit. Did that enter your thinking at all?
It actually did not, and now that, as soon as I said it, I realized that was sort of a gradual development, and I assume that the value to the property, to have it designated legally as such, would perhaps be worth pursuing. I don't know that it, I can't imagine it would be conditions of approval.
No, 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 that's not the intent of my question. The question is that, you know, it benefits the, you know, the city to know that we do have, within the housing stock, you know, properties that do, that can accommodate a JADU in the future, regardless of what the owners intend to do with their property in the immediate.
I would love to, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt Commissioner. I would love to defer to Greg, the homeowner. I would imagine that he, he's a Realtor himself, and he could certainly imagine the value of it. And given that it is, it completely has its own private entry, there would be a real value in going ahead and having it recognized under the permit submittal as such, as a junior accessory dwelling, or junior accessory suite, I guess it's called.
A JADU, or whatever it is we call it.
Yes, exactly.
So, hi, everyone, I'm Greg.
There we go.
Hi. So, yeah, I mean, our intention of that space with the use of it was really for flexible use. So, we have three kids, you know, it could be used as a media room, but it could also, if we had an in-law stay from, say, Chicago, come out and stay, they would have that entrance and exit would give them the ability to come and go, you know, without coming up through the main house, so some, that separation. That was the intention of it, was that flexibility to, depending on what was going on in our lives, to be able to have, you know, either the use directly from in the house or, you know, direct access from, say, an in-law, something like that.
Okay, thank you.
This is Brock Wagstaff. I, just to clarify, I think if you do an ADU, you would have to have, it would have to be an ADU to subtract the FAR. And that would involve having a kitchen presumably of some sort. So, I don't think it makes much difference in terms of whether the house would pass design review or not, in any case. But if you, if you want to do it as an ADU, I think you have to actually do it to be able to utilize taking FAR away.
And I'd say, our preference would be to not have to put an additional kitchen down there, just because of the size of the room is small. And again, just, I think the most likely use would be of an in-law or something, you know, not separately rented as a separate unit.
Yeah, I agree.
Any other questions for the applicant?
Yeah, I mean, one thing that Kenneth had mentioned, you know, we did, as he had mentioned, the downhill neighbor, you know, we provided plans in a letter, and we got a call from the downhill neighbor, and she was very sweet and very supportive. And to quote her, she had, you know, no problem at all with the plans and that, you know, she thought that it made a lot of sense with the neighborhood.
This is Brock again, I had one funny thing to add that you might pass along to Kenneth, is you'll probably want a door into your master bedroom closet at some point.
Yeah, that's a Kenneth, that's a Kenneth thing. I mean, I guess, just to add on to, just what Kenneth was saying, I think the overall intention, again, was to keep it from the street and from, you know, looking on from the outside, very, you know, not a lot of change from the existing footprint or structure, just to kind of keep in line with other homes in the neighborhood. That was really the intention of the way that we looked at these, this expansion.
Thank you. Any other questions for the applicant? I am seeing none, so, there's one other attendee who has not spoken yet, that would be Matt. Matt, would you want to speak?
I'm not seeing a raised hand.
Yeah, I was gonna say, if you do want to, you need to raise your hand.
I don't see a raised hand.
Yeah, I'm seeing none, then, okay, then I will bring it closer to public hearing part of this, and bring it back to the committee. And I'm going to go in order that I see you, so the first one is Commissioner Swisher. What would you like to say about this project?
Yeah, so, I think it's a great design, I like it very much, I like the way the space is used. I particularly like the exterior design of the house. It has almost like a Japanese style to it, you know, Frank Lloyd Wright style, whatever. It looks really, I like it a lot, I like the way that they use the, everything about it, I like. It's a really nice design, so I don't have any objections to it whatsoever, and I would favor findings for it.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Wagstaff.
I also think that they've done a nice job on the house, and I can support all of it, including the FAR exception.
Okay, Commissioner Swisher.
I thank you, yeah, I find this to be entirely non-controversial. The design is, you know, very much compliant with the guidelines for design review, you know, very attractive treatment of the exterior of the house, very thoughtful use of the space. I've got no objection to floor area ratio, nor the removal of the non-native tree either. So I can easily make the findings.
Right, and Commissioner Swisher?
Yes, I actually agree with the prior commissioners.
Natasha, I think your sound's out.
It might be your microphone.
Yeah, your mic is breaking up.
I don't hear anything now. Can you hear me?
Yes, now we can hear you.
Okay, okay, you're gonna pick up background noise as well, unfortunately. So I was just saying that I thought that the, I agree with the prior commissioners' comments. I thought that the overall design was compatible with the neighborhood and really pleasing. I really liked the design a lot. I thought the three additions were modest, and you didn't, you know, hardly actually visible from the street. And also, the removal of the heritage tree seemed to comply with all the necessary criteria, so I also can accept the findings.
Thank you, and just to round out the comments, I like the design as well. I went to the site today and sort of stuck my head in around the back and looked. And, you know, my biggest concern actually was impact on neighbors, and it seems like it would be minimal.
You're having a little sound issue again, try leaning back a little.
Oh, sorry, can you hear me now?
Yes.
I just said that I went to the site, and I, my biggest concern was really about impacting neighbors and didn't feel that there really was much. And I guess the fact that the neighbors aren't here complaining is probably indicative that that's, that is in fact the case. So I think I too can make the findings for approval, including the heritage tree removal and so on. I would say with that, would anybody like to make a motion?
I'll move to accept the findings.
So are you moving to approve?
Yes.
Is there a second?
Yeah, I'll second, and just specify that we're approving design review for area ratio and heritage tree removal, 20-18 for 75 via Hermosa.
As recommended by staff.
As recommended by staff.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? None, so this motion passed 5 to 0. And if anybody chooses to appeal, they can, they have 10 days to appeal to City Council. Okay. The next thing on the agenda is approval of the August 11 minutes. Would anybody like to move approval of the minutes?
Sure, I'll move to approve the minutes of our meeting of August 11, 2020.
Is there a second?
I will second it.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Were there any opposed? No, so I think that was unanimous approval of the minutes. Next up is Planning Commissioner Reports, does anyone have a report? I see heads shaking no, and no one say yes. So it appears that there's no Planning Commissioner Reports. That is the end of our agenda for the evening. So, would anyone like to move adjournment?
I'll move, we adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned.
Right.
Thank you, Erin, for a very good report.
Thank you, Erin, and my apologies to all of you for having held up the meeting by six or seven minutes. I don't know what happened.
No problem, thank you all. All right, take care.
Thank you. Have a nice evening.
Good night.
How do I turn off the recording?